Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Richmond Board of Education to order. And because we have our organization meeting tonight, I will start the meeting. If you will all rise for the pledge. We are honored tonight to have Mrs. Coosdale's 3rd grade class, Blake Radzuski, Aiden Mueller, Jacob McLeod, Chloe Franzoski, and Abby Van Haber back. And thank you so much for coming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. Do you want to help yourselves to some refreshments back there?
Oh, good stuff.
Okay, Terry, if you could call the roll, please.
Okay, Margaret.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Bridgette.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
And Jeff.
Here.
All here.
If we have any public comments, this would be a time for you to have an opportunity to speak at the microphone. If there are questions, you can leave your name and I'll get back to you on those. Is the mic time for me? I don't feel it, but...
I don't know, I think you can hear me.
Okay, good.
It doesn't sound like it.
All right. If there are no public comments, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our Board of Education for their many years of service amongst them, some more than others. But I don't think any of us really appreciate what is entailed by this group of volunteers. And particularly as we've had our bond issue this past year. Our Board of Education and the hundreds like it across the state preserve the core of our democratic public education. They ensure that decisions on school programming are made by people. We've elected to represent our community's values, cultures, and circumstances. Showing appreciation for the important work of school boards should be a year-round process, but too often we neglect to recognize the dedication and hard work of these men and women who represent us. This January, the staff and the students of our district are asking all members of the community to take a moment and thank a school board member. Thank you to the men and women who dedicate countless personal hours to ensure the needs of the community are met by our public schools. We salute the public servants of Richmond Community Schools whose dedication and civic responsibility make local control of public schools our community possible. We applaud them for their vision and voice to prepare today's students to be tomorrow's leader. The men and women serving Richmond Community Schools include Margaret Teltow, Tracy Bartel, Jeff Toit, Dan Hill, Robert Rendell, Andrew Oderkirk, and Bridgette Smith. I know we announce our public meetings, but those are just a few of the times that they put in many, many hours beyond with many committee meetings and following information that's sent out in many different ways today, whether it's email or attending events or many things. There's countless hours that these individuals give to our school district. And at this time, I'd like to show a little bit of appreciation with a certificate. This one is for Margaret.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, you have the agenda before you. I would ask for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
The... There's been a motion made by Dan Hill and seconded by Bridgette Smith to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. The first order of business is to call for the nomination of president. Are there any nominations for president of the Richmond School Board?
We've nominated Margaret Teltow.
Margaret Teltow has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Margaret Teltow for president?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Margaret. With you take over the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board. Next, on the agenda, nomination of remaining officers. We open it up, the next would be the vice president. Be accepting nomination for vice president.
Nominate Tracy Bartel.
Is that Jeff? Any other nominations? Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor of Tracy as vice president? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Tracy. Next, Board Secretary. Nomination for Board Secretary?
I'll nominate Dan Hill.
It's been moved and support... Oops, whoops. Nomination of Dan Hill. Don't want to get ahead of myself in case anybody else wants to be secretary. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none. It's been moved and supported to nominate Dan Hill as Secretary of the Board of Education. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Dan. The last office we have is the Office of Treasurer. Looking for a nomination.
I'll nominate Jeff Toit.
We have a nomination of Jeff Toit for Treasurer. Is there anyone else? Hearing none. It's been moved and supported to nominate Jeff Toit as Treasurer of the Board of Education. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jeff. Next, items of interest from members of the Board. Does anybody have anything for this evening? Okay, next, committee reports. Marketing Committee met on December 18th. Tracy?
We met with the majority of our discussion around the advisory or focus groups that we're hoping to have happen soon. And Dr. Olson is going to take the lead with those. And we also had a further discussion about the website and that we wish that could potentially be changed and improved and more user-friendly with more information about what happened in our schools on...
And the focus groups are the staff, parent, and student groups that we've been talking about. And I believe the idea was to get things going sometime January, was it?
Well, it was after exams, so...
That's right, second semester.
Early February. End of January.
Okay, thank you. Next, approval of consent agenda items, which includes regular meeting, discipline hearing minutes, and a personnel report.
Make a motion for approval of consent agenda as presented. Or?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our administrative items. First one, our architect's contract. Dr. Olson?
Okay. I put these up so if any was here, they could leave. But Mr. Hendrix is coming and his contract isn't quite ready yet. So, the first one is architect's contract, and you have that in your packet. It pretty much reflects what Dale Jerome from French had in his request for proposals that we... When he was selected, with all the legal necessities that has been worked out with the Truen Law Firm, Kirk Harold. Are there any questions? First, we would need the... A motion to approve the architect's contract as presented before we can ask any questions. Anyone out there?
Make a motion to approve the architect's contract.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion or questions?
So, this is exactly when we first... When we first hired them or...
When they were selected.
Selected. This is just putting it all in writing because the bond passed.
The bond passed. Now, we need to put a more defined contract into place because this is our actual commitment. And this follows a standard form, and that is why all of the markups stay in it. It's part of the AIA Association Form, so...
So, it's going to look exactly like this with the markings on it?
With the markings on it, okay. The form always stays the same, and then they add and delete, but that's always in here.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote then. Tracy?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, convergent technology contract.
Okay, this is... This contract was prepared by Kirk Harold at Truen. It doesn't follow quite the same type of AIA standard language, but is one that Kirk Harold has prepared and modified for us. I mean, it's been used before, so... And reflects what we were quoted for our pricing when we selected convergent.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the convergent technology contract as presented?
Make a motion to approve the convergent technology contract as presented?
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than, again, it's the same thing, it's just putting it in writing because we passed the bond, it's exactly what we looked at to do when we selected them.
Correct.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
And Chip Hendrix is still expecting to be here tonight unless he texts me otherwise, but he was in Flint at 5:00 and expected he would be able to make it to our meeting so he'd have an opportunity to meet those of you he has not yet met. And I really had wanted to have his contract for tonight's meeting, but due to circumstances of weather, schedules, et cetera, we are agreed conceptually, but we're not satisfied with it on paper just yet. So, I'd like to bring that to you at our next earliest convenience.
Next, resolution to set dates of regular board meetings. Terry, it's provided us with a tentative schedule. And it basically... Are those the third?
The fourth, because the city council meetings are the first and third. It makes it a little bit easier.
Oh, okay, okay. So, these are all fourth Mondays, pretty much.
As much as possible, right?
Unless it falls into, like, May would be Memorial Day and that. Okay. Okay. So, unless someone has a different or better idea if we wanted to... A motion to just approve these dates as our 2014 meeting schedule.
Make a motion to approve the tentative schedule of board meeting dates as presented?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then Terry will just send something out to us that says, "Thank you." Committee reassignments. Since I didn't hear from anyone about their committee assignments, am I to assume that everyone wants to stay the same or what is... We just didn't...
I'm fine with her. I'm comfortable staying.
I'm just wondering if we still feel that there's a need for all of the committees that are currently in committee? And if there's a need to have standing people on those committees all the time? Or would there be some that we need to meet on a regular basis and then others that maybe whoever consulted those, if they're needed, we would make those happen?
That's a very good question. My opinion I'm going to throw out here, budget and finance absolutely should be a standing committee, the same people, meets. Marketing, we've done a lot of work. I guess we could play that by ear, but if the thought was, and you're thinking because of some that are on more than one committee, some are on two or more, maybe to kind of decrease the need for being on the same committee the whole time. Tracy, like, if we appointed to each one of the committees, which I have budget and finance, marketing, facilities, curriculum, technology. Does that make sense to everyone that that's what they remember as well?
Curriculum slash technology, right?
Well, that's what I thought, but Tracy and I had a discussion and she thought it was too separate. I thought it was curriculum slash technology.
I think it should be one.
Wasn't it? Okay.
Because the technology just supports the curriculum.
Should. See, I did, but I... So, that's four. If budget and finance stayed, the three core people, and then a... Oh, she can't switch now. She's already said no. She said she's good.
Now, who's on the curriculum and technology? I think Jeff, Tracy, and...
Jeff, Tracy, right. Now, curriculum and technology.
If we need again, I would like to join that in addition.
Well, curriculum and technology, in my mind, this year especially, will be a committee that probably should see a lot of time of meeting with everything that we've got going on with the bond. So, if that's the case, then, you know, we'd want it to make sure it was three people who were dedicated that they were going to be able to be a part of it. Now, if, in Tracy's idea, if you... If we picked a chairman for the marketing, the facilities, and the curriculum slash technology, and then as meetings came up, the chairman would make sure that they were able to get two people to attend the meeting. That's not such a bad idea either. That kind of maybe would give people a chance to...
Like, so one person would be the chair, and then two people, whoever showed up. I don't think that really gives any... One difficulty we've had is continuity. And that doesn't really lend itself to continuity and, you know, "Well, this is what we've done. This is where we're going," kind of thing.
But if the other side of it, and I agree, but if the other side of it is, we can't get people to commit to wanting to be on committees, how do we do it so that at least when it's time for a committee to meet, that there's going to be three people that are going to be part of it? You know, like, right now, budget and finance is Bridgette, Jeff, and myself. Marketing is Andy, Tracy, me. Facilities is Rob and Dan, and I've been sitting in since Jennifer left. Curriculum and technology then was Tracy, Rob. Okay.
I mean, if we feel a bit consistency in having those people be there all the time, I just thought that I would bring it up just in light of the fact that there have been a lot of discipline hearings as well lately and attempting to get enough people to be at those as well as these potentially on a monthly basis. I was just attempting to try and find a different solution since that seems to be a difficult.
The other thing would be to go back to workshops and not have this many committee meetings.
I like the committee myself.
Everyone knows that I'm a committee person because I'm the one that brought it to us in the first place to go back to it. But maybe if it's even here, the... There's the three people that are on the committees, and if a committee meeting... Because budget and finance is going to meet every month. Facilities really didn't meet that much until the last couple of months and with issues. But again, with the bond, there, you know, could be things coming. Right. Right. But that doesn't mean that if there's the three people that are part of the committee and there's a committee meeting and someone can't make it, there's four other people. Because on a committee, only three people, because otherwise it's a quorum, you know, so you can't have four because otherwise it's a majority of the board. So, a committee has to be three people.
I like the idea. I like the idea, too. I think it brings a... Effective budget and finances, effective by marketing and everything else. It gives you the opportunity to have different people at some meetings.
So, the plan looking to have a chairperson, which one of us?
Yeah. Like, right now, the chair, budget and finance is Jeff. Marketing is me, I guess. Facilities is Dan. And curriculum, I don't know that there... Was there a chair when you...
Tracy.
Tracy. So, you know, is it your... And I know, I'm... I know that there's lots of stuff, you know, other than school board that everyone has going on. And the committees are important. So, if you're... Are you looking...
I think it might be easier to have an understanding of how many committee meetings are going to be in a year. Or it's easier for me to look at it and go, "Okay, if I'm going to be on the curriculum committee, then every other month I have a curriculum meeting that I have to sit in and make work."
Right.
Versus, "Oh, we need one of those." And so, it just appears in a schedule that's already put in place and has been in place for a while. That's more difficult for me to do with my schedule. So, if I know that September and, you know, August, I don't know, October, December, that those are going to be months that have that added into them, that's easier from my perspective. That's easier to deal with.
Okay, so with the exception of budget and finance, because that's... We've already set when those meetings are going to be. With the other committees, if we picked, if we said, "Okay, our board meetings are the fourth Monday." If the second Monday is committee meeting night, is that kind of what you're saying? So that you would know if there was going to have to be a committee meeting, it would...
I know that's helpful to me. I don't know if that's helpful to anybody else at all. And if there was a... And maybe the, you know, so if there's a chairperson and they look, and the chairpeople got together at the committee and they just said, "Well, this month, this week to happen, that month, that to happen," that, like, you know, if there was some sort of a rotation that was in place, I don't know, maybe that would make it easier. More user-friendly. I don't know. And if something came up that needed, then you could call one meeting and use an actual one. That's fifteen a month. I don't know. It's just the last-minute scheduling is just hard to handle.
Okay. So, the idea of the second Monday of the month, with the exception of budget and finance, we would earmark for committee meetings. If there's going to have to be a facilities meeting, it's going to be the second Monday of the month. That's when it would meet. With the idea of knowing, though, with respect to curriculum and technology and possibly facilities, that there might be some other things besides just that second Monday as things go along for the year, but that would be the focus. That would be our committee meeting night?
Including budget and finance? Is that going to be the second Monday?
No, budget and finance, we... Well, I guess we could if you wanted. We've been doing it... We've been doing it that week before, right? We could do it that same.
But then it would prevent any of us to join any other meetings, though, correct?
Well, and you'd have two weeks.
If you're going to do it the week before, you do it the third Monday.
That's what we have been doing.
So, let's do that the third Monday, then keep everything else the second Monday? Because this is going to be a standing committee?
Yes.
For the next year?
Yes. So, budget and finance would meet the third Monday, and then...
And everything else the second Monday.
Does that work? Andy, would you like to join facilities? There's an open spot.
Well, let's go back and...
Are you trying to get Bridgette out of...
Well, no, I just...
You want budget?
I have a little experience in budgets, so if you'd like me to help out with the budget, maybe I could do that. Maybe it would be well-suited in marketing. Just a recommendation. I don't care. Whatever you think.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
It doesn't matter to me. I just think, like, with budget, there's going to be a lot of decisions made, and I kind of want to be a part of it, since I do know a lot about education. So, I don't know. I just, coming from a school background, I just feel like I kind of want to be a part of it.
Well, there's two others.
So, are you...
Put me on facilities.
Knock on that door if they want to put someone else in.
Yeah, Jeff stays, and I would prefer to stay.
I mean, only issue, if you're on two, then you can't have just the one. I mean, only issue, if you're, if you're on two, then you can't have just the one, the one Monday, because then you can't go to both of them unless you're going to do one at six, and one at nine, or eight.
Or six and, six and seven thirty, something like that.
You just have to plan that upfront. You're going to be on two committees, minus budget and finance. That's two, two meetings on the third Monday. And those people that are on budget and finance, I guess we just choose one on the one.
Right. So facilities, I could put you on? Well, I've just been the fill-in, just to have a body there. And we'll gladly give that up.
And I need those people to meet afterward, to choose a date.
What people?
The facilities today, we need to reschedule last week's meeting.
Okay. Okay. All right, so are we good with that?
I may not be able to say as a committee chair for the curriculum.
Okay. 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 Before we go on, did you, did we want to, I see the chip is here, do we want to do anything now, or do you want to wait till we're done?
I prefer to do it now, but that's your pleasure.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
What are you going to do?
Introduce you. This is Chip Hendricks from R.C. Hendrick and Son, the company that we selected as our construction manager. So he has been here from the get-go, and taking a close look at all of our buildings, and helping to develop the list of projects that we included in the bond, and narrowing that down to making sure that we're getting the essential things, but maybe trying to make it a manageable number to take to our community. So, I don't know, Chip, if you have any comments you'd like to make, because we've had several changes on the board since we started a couple of years ago.
It'd be bad if I had a one and a half hour to your meeting. This is kind of, I call it, this is kind of my quiet time right now when you get through the design phase. We will be represented at all the design meetings, looking out for your interest at those, and making sure that what's being designed fits the dollars. But I think the best thing that we do, I think that we, I don't know that we have an absolute rigid, strict design schedule yet, so I think we'll kind of push French to make sure that if we have that, follow that, so that we don't slip, because we're going to be kind of at the tail end as far as the bidding part of it. Our time comes when the bidding's done, the contracts are written, and then it's our show. But we're just, you know, we're there looking out for your interests. I don't know if you have any questions about our firm, if you don't know, I'll say.
Yes, my biggest issue is cost overruns. How do we prevent cost overruns? What, what checks and balances do we put in place to make sure?
When we, we started, and we have a budget that we're working with right now, we do, we'll do a, we'll have an estimate at the schematic phase, and then at the design development phase, to make sure that what we're doing is going to match that. French is real good to work with on that. They're, they're a firm, I think the one thing that identifies them, what, they don't like to design something twice, so they work closely with us to make sure if we say, hey, we think you're, you know, a little scope creep, or things are out of, out of whack, they, they just, they'll pull back, you know, right away. We've never had a project finish over budget ever, and we've worked with forty-five different school districts many and multiple times. We have, once the project actually begins, we have regular, we have monthly budget meetings to identify things, that there are items that the, the district will be purchasing, some furnishings, and some technology, equipment, and we make sure that we account for, you know, all those dollars, and we have a set of, a set of what the school does, and we make sure that they match up. So that's, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, I've preached many times with the people that have anything to do with construction management, not business, that the budget really is the most important thing. I mean, if we put a wall up and it's wrong, I could fix that. If we get to the end of the project and we're over by a dollar, I can't, it's too late then, I can't fix that. So, I don't know about.
Well, it's almost scary when you say you've never gone, never gone over budget on something. So, so I guess, let me rephrase the question. Instead, you may not go over budget, but I still want to make sure we get the, the product that we signed up for and not get less because we ran out of money.
And there's checks and balances for that. You have separate contracts with us, separate contracts with the architects, and so it's kind of a free-pronged thing, where everybody's kind of, we're helping, working together, we all have that goal, and we know how much money there is to do that, so we work together to do that. And actually, I will take back, but I said we did have one that went over budget one time, but it was not, they didn't share with us, except for Hope Schools. And so that was back when you actually put your interest with the money that was invested. Nowadays, it's an eighty, put ten million dollars, you start off with that, the amount of interest you're getting is, is, you know, is nothing. But back then, you actually earned some interest. Well, there was, that was a, it was a, I don't know what the, what year or what happened, but they didn't earn the interest. And they actually, when we, when we came up with the bottom line number of that, that says, okay, we cannot exceed, everything we're going to do, here's the number that we can't exceed, we have districts that sometimes with that interest, they know they're going to earn, sometimes they include that in that number, and sometimes they don't include that, or Hope Schools did include that, we didn't control that, and they didn't tell us till we were done. They said, oh, by the way, because of the economy, the changing economy, we earned, and I think it was like fifteen thousand dollars less than interest than they anticipated. Whether they had to make any other general fund or not, but that was, that was a very initial circumstance.
So did you use any management reserve anywhere?
Oh, there's a, there's a contingency fund. There's a seven percent contingency fund in the project, and I think that is, I don't know, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. And we're very stingy with that. We'll wait, we, we will assess as we, as the project goes on, we get a lot of remodeling, you know, maybe into July, where, when we feel, we assess how much risk is left, and we might say, okay, we still have seven hundred thousand dollars, let's go, we can spend three hundred of that, but I'm comfortable with, you know, we still have four hundred thousand in the budget. But I'm pretty stingy before I let, or let that happen. But I also, if you think there's a decision to be made, where you say, okay, if we, you know, we have to, if we want to, you want to do a certain thing, and if you don't do it now, it's going to be too late down the road, down the road too much. But there's a constant check and balance as that goes on. Like I said, the monthly budget meetings is a line by line by line checking that, and I know Dickie, the back of course, Steve Pentland.
One of the things that gave me confidence is R.C. Hendrick built Stanley Sterling's High School when I was up north, which was a neighboring district. And if you knew the superintendent there, he was a former business manager, and had a strong reputation for being very, very careful with the dollars. And he had nothing but good things to say about R.C. Hendrick, and his experience working with them, and how they were able to make suggestions. And so partly based on that recommendation, as I interviewed firms up north, they ended up being the firm that we hired for a renovation project at Aronak Eastern when I was there. And I had a positive experience in that we didn't go over costs on anything, and they were able to offer several options and suggestions of ways that we could get essentially the same outcome, but maybe saving a few dollars here and there, too, so.
Addings doesn't get better with time, and surprises aren't good.
I agree. It's just, it's communication. You just have to stay that way, you know, go along the flow. And just, you know, when the bidding happens, if things are within budget, it doesn't mean that we just sit back and say, okay, it's, we're on Easy Street now, it's easy to do. We're always looking for ways that we can save you some money, because, you know, there are other things. You've got a, a long list of things, but I'm sure if there's any money left over that, that didn't make the bond issue. So we're hoping you can start to echo away at that, that list as well, but we want to satisfy what's in the bond first, and then move that, you know.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else? One of the things that we talked about as a board, I was on the board the last time we had our ma, last major bond project. And the idea of updating and letting us know what's going on. And the last time, at our monthly board meetings, the architect and construction manager were here, gave the board updates, you know, if there are questions as we went along, it helps, because the TV cameras are rolling, to kind of get that information out. So I'm assuming we're going to do that kind of thing again, once we get rolling?
Yeah, we're, we're used to that.
Okay.
I can only remember one district where they actually, I, I came to the board kind of like this, to be introduced, and they just said, hi, and that was it. And then I, they didn't want me out of meeting. They actually, I didn't give a great report or anything. I mean, they just, that just wasn't a board thing. But we're used to typically coming in, in a very short report of what we're doing, what we're going to be doing in the very near future, answering, you know, your questions. And if the facilities committee wanted, you know, a little more than, than that, we'd be happy to, you know, work with them also. But we anticipate that, you know, when you're in the coffee shop at seven, seven thirty in the morning, and somebody's asking a question, why is that red, we, we want you to have an answer.
Right.
Why something's red, why it's blue, why something's dangling up in the air.
Right, thanks.
Now, I also, if, I will just say that if any of you have questions, and you have, you know, you, I'm happy to have input individually, but as soon as you call me on the phone or you email me, as soon as that's over, I'll be letting Dr. Olson know that you contacted me, that's what's going on, because we only work for one boss, and unless she passes the torch, she's, she's the one.
Well, and you can rest assured that any contacts from the board will come through the superintendent.
Then I'll pass them to you, and I'll pass them back, then to everyone.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's how we do it.
Everybody gets it.
Right, right. Okay, anybody else? Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Very exciting. Thank you.
Thanks for grabbing that one.
Okay, now, financial institutions. Are you doing? That, or does Vicki?
I, I don't know that any of us have to. These are the, the financial institutions that we currently are using. If you have any questions about them, Vicki can give you more detail, but basically, no change.
Okay, otherwise, the motion would be in order to accept Charter One, First State Bank, and PNC Bank as our financial institutions for this year?
Motion to maintain our financial institutions, Charter One, First State Bank, and PNC Bank. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next. Appointment of auditors. Yo and yo have been our auditors for ever?
Probably not, but at least as long as I've been here, and then some, and, you know, we know what to expect of how they work, and they know how we work, so we've had a good working relationship at this point in time, and I see no need to change.
The motion would be in order?
Make a motion to appoint current auditors, yo, yo, CPA, and business consultants.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Designation of location for posting public notices and meetings.
Presently, this is in the board office and on the website.
Motion would be in order to keep things as they are with respect to posting of our notices and meetings?
For move.
Thank you, Rob. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next. Appointment of MASB Legislative Relations Network Representative. Who was our person this past year?
I was.
Right? Andy?
I, I would. I'm not sure I'd get a whole lot out of it going through the meetings.
I believe they're on Tuesdays.
How many are there? Once a month. The feedback I have is that, you know, there's, there's inherent people that have been there for a long time. They know each other, and they have discussions, stuff that's already happened. And when I ask questions, they said, well, don't worry about that. Your superintendent gets all that anyway. So my thing is, like, why should I go and represent my, it's stuff that they've already passed on Linda, so.
When, if, if we had people going to the county meetings, I found, when I went with Steve, that they were rather redundant of that meeting.
That's what I was going to say.
And the two that I went to, it's, it's absolutely, from my perspective, not a good investment of your time. If they're already got all that stuff to Linda, I don't know. That's the truth.
That is the truth. And Linda is right. Those school board, Macomb County School Board dinners, they, you do hear the exact same thing that you heard at the legislative day, because they have a legislative update report right there at those meetings.
I think it would be good if we did participate in the county meeting, because you get to know other schools and share ideas and.
Do, do we have to appoint someone?
Well, we haven't had. I don't know that we have to. I mean, there's no law that says we have to.
What do we lose if we're not representative? I guess that's my question.
The idea that committee is to keep us informed about anything that's happening at the state legislature arena, that would have potentially affected what we've been here, is what that, what that committee, I think, is what we're supposed to gain from that. And I know Macomb's people, who are, those folks who spend a lot of time in Lincoln City, are the ones in the state who know a lot about school, school laws, and all the changes that have happened from the Lincoln City perspective to what we've been hearing. So.
They haven't filled the vacant position that they have right now.
I mean, I think that that's really what that's about. But I, I mean, if it's, if it's redundant, and it's something that happened in another meeting, that, that may not as, you know, imperative for somebody to be at that one.
Maybe it's more important to attend the Macomb County ones every month, someone attending those, so, because you're getting that information at that meeting.
Right, and then it wouldn't mean that we couldn't also attend if there was a, an issue that somebody wanted to make sure that they followed up on, but it tends to be very similar information from the superintendent's meeting to the county meeting to the legislative meeting.
Do we have to appoint someone in order to be able to attend? Or are we just able to attend because we're a school board? Are we, you know what I'm saying? If something comes up and someone wanted to go?
You could appoint anybody any night they, you, they wanted to go.
If you're appointed, you're on the mail, mailing list, so you, you do get a mailing once a month notifying you of the meeting. Other than that, I, I'm just a little skeptical when I ask questions at the first meeting, and I didn't like the answers I got. I said, don't worry, we'll send out the, the minutes, because I was worried about coming back and briefing the board. I was told, ah, you don't need none of that. Your superintendent gets all this stuff, so don't worry about taking notes. So I just, a little leery about going down there and spending a couple hours to try to understand and comprehend a new topic for me, which Linda's already covered all of it a couple months before, so that's what I got out of it.
So what's the thought?
I don't think we need to appoint anybody. If they want to do, they can go try and make some, with how many wants to do.
You could have the notices go to the chair, and then you could forward them on to the board, if someone has time to put them to us.
The, the MASB Legislative, have that notices come to the president? Is that what you're saying?
We could, or they could come to me, and then I could pass them on to the board, if anyone were, wanted to attend a particular meeting. Whatever, I, I just know we haven't. Steve really made an effort to go pretty regular, but since he went off the board, and I went with him that one time, and was asked why I was there, so.
Was he bringing back good information, or?
Well, he told me.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure, maybe, maybe I was the weak link.
His perception was very similar to yours. His perception was very similar to yours.
It was very similar to yours. Well, just so information, if, any kind of information that needs to come, gets to someone here. If someone wants to appoint me as that, as the president, that at least I would get the information and I could get it to everyone if, you know, if something came up and we thought we wanted to, to go, if we wanted to, to do it like that.
Make a motion to appoint Margaret Feltow as MASB Legislative Relations Network Representative.
The board.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Macomb County School Board Association Legislative Representative and Alternate Representative. This is the one, we need to have a representative and, and a good alternate. And it, these are meetings that we really should be sending someone to. And Linda, Linda attends them as well.
These, these aren't, if I remember, this is the meeting that only happens occasionally, like once or twice a year where MASB comes out and they help to develop a legislative agenda for the coming year. Correct? Am I at the right meeting? So we've had a couple, three people go when we went.
Mm-hmm.
Whoever could go, who attended this. Well, we must have, they must have been a representative.
Yeah, we did.
It's just hard to commit if I don't know what's happening.
Right.
We cannot, thankfully, we can't feel that I can commit to anything if I don't know what's going on.
All day thing or in the evening?
No, it's in the evening.
Well, again, maybe if someone would volunteer to be the representative and the alternate to at least get the information.
I'll be the representative. I'll do all the things.
Okay, then someone would need to make a motion for that, please. Andy volunteered.
Make a motion to appoint Dan Hill as the MSCA Legislative Representative. Is he the alternate representative?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, appointment of attorneys. These are the same firms that we have been using?
Correct.
So, go ahead.
Don Benato from Truen Law Firm, just so you know, he's been someone that I've worked with while I've been here pretty consistently. And he retired at the end of December. And Martha Michero from Truen's called me last week and informed me of that. And at this point in time, unless we would prefer to have someone else, she's assigned us to Robert Huber. And he's an individual that we worked with on the last round of negotiations and a couple of other incidents when Don Benato was out of town. So he's somewhat familiar with our district and our local one representative. I think that will work well for us. He assisted us with this recent grievance that has that in advance for right now, so I just wanted to add that for information. But I would recommend continuing with this group.
I'll make a, make a motion to, to our current attorneys.
It's been moved and supported. Any discuss, excuse me, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, next, board expectations discussion. Oh, you had a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Ooh, see, I'm sorry. You sure?
Yeah, I just, do these, do you ever change law firms? Do you ever look into something else? Do you ever, are there retaining fees with any of these that are changed over the years, have not changed over the years?
I don't think we've seen an increase from Truen. We, I could go back over that, but I haven't seen a notice of an increase.
The Truen Law Firm, we probably have used twenty years. And we use them.
But I'm like, you've gathered school law firms in the state, so I know Truen's one of them, so.
And right now, we wouldn't be looking at, I would not recommend changing because we have some rapport built up there. And we have several things going on with, you know, Beverly Bonding is our bond attorney. Got Kirk Carroll working on the contracts for the construction project. We do have some experience with Robert Huber since the last round of negotiations. So I, I don't think at this point in time it would be advisable to change.
I wasn't suggesting that we would. I just was curious if that ever happened or if there was.
Sure.
A financial situation or a need to, to see what else was out there potentially. And are Collins and Blaha and the other two, are they specific to be specialists in different areas?
Uh, they're, Collins and Blaha is also experienced in school law. Gary Collins worked with Vamberen Public Schools for probably his whole career. I want to say he'd been with them about fifty years when I went there, but probably wasn't quite that long. But he had a very long history there. He worked with Plymouth Canton, a number of school district. And Pollard and Elberson, they're part of that ongoing lawsuit that the state has had since before I ever became a superintendent the first time around. Which is why we have them in here now. So, and then there's also Clark Hill that does a lot of school work. But I would highly recommend continuing with a firm that does school work. And Collins and Blaha, they have written several editions of the Teacher Tenure book that everybody uses.
Thank you.
We currently aren't using them. We, they were on, they were added to our list at the time when we thought we needed an attorney because our attorney was going to be on the stand.
Okay, next, board expectations discussion. This goes back to our workshop and we were going to take a little bit of time at our organizational meeting. We have the, our sheets that we gave out. Talking about our expectations of each other, board member expectations, oh, good too, of the president. So, Dan, how about if you start?
Do you want me to do this, please?
Let's do, let's start with board expectations of, of one another. Let's start with that. What do you got?
We're, we're elected as individuals, but we work as part of a team. There's only one vote. Need to understand the difference between board and staff. As a board member, it is our responsibility to see that the schools operate well, but it's not our responsibility to run them. That is the superintendent's job. Share your views, but listen to the views of others. Use communication with each other and staff. Excellent attendance. Keep the children first. Accept the criticism and most of all, maintain a sense of humor.
Richard?
Yeah. Well, I kind of correlated the board president and the board, like, what I expect of each other. Like, in our, like, especially in like our committee meetings and here. Set goals, establish timeline, delegate responsibilities and follow up and follow through on the action, making sure that things are getting done and on a timely fashion. I, for the board of the, board of the board. Just if, if somebody has a different opinion, it's, we're all individuals, like you said, and it's, it's okay.
When you talk about the committees, do you see that that wasn't happening or what's, what's the idea?
Well, I feel like for our committees, we need kind of a big picture. And I don't, there was only one that I'd been attending. I, I just feel like we need to set realistic goals, but after we set the goals, we need to establish when things are going to get done. Who's going to do them? Like, what, you know, the us administration? And then follow up, are these things getting done? Because I just feel like we talk about a lot of things, but then it, there's no follow through on it. And then we're always, and our meetings are just scattered. We need a definite plan. So that's from the person kind of sitting back, observing, looking in. I really feel like we just need to be more organized and follow through on things, follow through on our actions. Because I, sometimes I feel like we're at a meeting and we'll say something and then there's no follow through and then it kind of circles around and did that ever happen? So that was my observation.
Rob?
Well, like pretty much what Danny and Richard already hit on, but the teamwork aspect has got to, has got to stay important as a group. Especially if we're going to get busy making decisions as we move along, we have to stay as a team. Be open minded, not be afraid to speak your opinion and be open minded to listen to that person's opinion without criticizing it, but take that information. Again, all those things that Danny and Richard did on the attendance and those, those are all, I mean, strong points.
Jeff?
I actually missed this meeting, so attendance, I think, is pretty important, but I didn't have the worksheet. But I also feel that attendance is probably really important. And I also feel that the schedules of the meetings are very important. When we say this meeting's going to last an hour, some of us have kids and families outside of here. We pay babysitters or say, hey, we'll be home at this time and everything seems to run over. So I think following an agenda, making sure that the meeting's scheduled for an hour, hour and a half, that, that we're done at those times. It's important to be, I don't know, support everyone else, but. Teamwork is important, just like Rob was saying. Basically, everything's sitting on the same, on the same.
When, when have we ever said a meeting was only going to last an hour?
When, like this meeting today is scheduled for one hour.
Who, who scheduled, who said this meeting was one hour?
If you go to the calendar, it says from six thirty to seven.
What calendar?
On the website.
Well, I, I don't know that that, what that says on the website has anything to do with how our meeting, well, we, we.
It's only a discussion, right?
It is. And, but I'm just saying, I want to know when we're, when did we ever say meetings were only going to be an hour?
Plenty of times we schedule meetings for six to eight o'clock and we're in, in the room at ten o'clock at night. My wife works nights. I'm home. If I'm, if I'm, my wife's working nights and I'm here, it means my kids are with someone else. Take them out of the house at ten o'clock at night or take them out of someone else's house and bring them home. That's unacceptable. And I won't be a fan of those meetings. Take it easy.
Once a month? Of the month that's not possible?
Well, once a month, I'm here. You know? But following the schedule, if it says it's two hours, we should know by the amount of items we have on here roughly how long it's going to be.
Andy?
I've got four things. Be present and prepared for required meetings, participate in school events during meetings. Listen to the facts and data presented and understand the gravity of the decisions you make. What are the impacts, any opportunity costs, trade space, second to the effects. Number four and the last one, have the intestinal fortitude to communicate and vote your position even if it's unpopular.
Yep. Tracy?
Um, I think so, my facility said as well, but, um, I think we need to help support one another. And in that, I mean that we need to help remind one another why we do what we do, why we're here. We need to help remind each other about that. I think we also need to help one another determine and remind each other if what we're discussing or what we're dealing with sits underneath our umbrella of the board. Or should it really be something for the superintendent and your officers to, to worry about and wonder about? And it's not ours to worry or wonder about. It could be to help remind one another about that. I think we also need to be willing to know and to recognize what we don't know. To know what we don't know and to, to say that and to ask questions about it. And be okay with maybe taking some extra time to ask some questions so that we can find out what we need to know. Um, I think as a, as a board, we need to develop trust with one another and that takes time and investment. And that I would expect board members to show up literally, but then also in every way. So, you know, if we are in a closed session, a phone that's on means that we're in an open session. And so phones, phones are off. If we're in a workshop, if we're in a meeting here and a phone comes out. I understand that there are connections that need to be had, but, and I do understand that. But to be present fully is an important thing lots of times as well. And to work in strength and that. Respect, we do need to, we do respect all thoughts and ideas that come to the table and that are here. And I guess I would just say something too against about time in, in that effort. Time is a huge piece to being present and to being here. And we all juggle a lot. We all juggle a lot. And it is through discussion that we learn though. And so if there's ever a time when someone feels as though the discussion is revolving door and it's not getting anywhere, somebody needs to say that loud. And then the person who maybe is leading us into that discussion needs to then justify why it is we're still having the discussion. So nobody needs to have their time at least, however, there might be some reasons as to why someone's asking the questions they're asking. Maybe that's just what needs to be seen.
Is that it? I didn't know if you were going to say, okay. And from my point of expectations, board member to board member, I think preparation. Knowing that when we come to the table, that everyone is equally prepared. And I don't think that that happens all the time. And sometimes, and I know everyone has other things besides being a school board member, but for the time that we are sitting down at the table, having a meeting, being prepared and knowing what it is we're talking about, I think is very important. And, and I, I apologize if there's something on the website that says the meeting's only going to last an hour, but we've never, ever said anywhere that a board meeting's only going to last an hour. And there are times and there are issues that come up that take longer, whether they're contract negotiations, discipline hearings, regular meetings, that's just the nature of the beast. And sometimes that comes in to play where people don't understand that when they get on the school board, exactly what is expected of them. And I, I think that we do try very hard. Sometimes we have a lengthy agenda and it just happens. But it was never said that when you got on the school board, you were going to have one meeting a month and it was going to be an hour. And I, I just ask, we've got a lot ahead of us this year, a lot. And, you know, everyone's got to be committed and, and teamwork, teamwork only goes so far if everybody's not doing the teamwork. And we, we. And we, we have to be prepared when we come to the meetings and we have to attend meetings. So that's all I'm going to say on that. The board, expectations of the board president. Diane?
Facilitate the meeting in a fair way. Be the board liaison, go between, between the board and the superintendent. And convey the consensus, so to speak, of the board to the superintendent. You know, if you kind of feel your board's leaning one way or the other, let the superintendent know.
Andy?
Four things. Lead the board, leadership. Have a vision and ensure all board members understand your vision. Strive toward defined goals. Never lose sight of the goals along the way. Hold board, board members accountable.
Rob?
The president to be the spokesperson for, for the board, whether it be publicly or with the, with superintendent. Liaison, that's, that was one that I, I used to work quite often. A liaison as a president is real fitting. And also to be that, that open-minded voice and for the board. And even though it might not be that person's real belief, but if the board believes in it, the president can be strong and convey that also. It just makes it look, makes the board look stronger as a unit. But so.
Bridget?
Okay. Be a selfless leader, meaning don't let emotions, personal feelings, opinions get in the way of decision-making. Look at the big picture of what is best for the sake of the school and use logical reasoning.
Tracy?
Work to keep everyone on the board informed and coolly. Be an example. All around, be very active, reactive, be willing to do things. What's the hold and keep confidence. And be the voice of the board. Find off of which you can be truly and certainly.
Jeff?
Leadership to all board members. Stress the importance of events and meetings and whatnot. Congratulations last year. Communication with all board members.
That's it? Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Smile. Always smile, board president should always smile.
Okay. Now, move our next item. I have labeled as other. And I, I did that, as I'm sure everyone on the board knows, but Dr. Olson has informed us that she is going to retire June 30th. And so the other this evening is that. And, well, I'm not going to get into all the thanking her and all that. We'll do that in June because she's still got a lot of stuff she's got to do before she goes. But we have a big job ahead of us as a school board, picking a superintendent. And it's a big process. I've done it twice. And I think, sitting here, I'm the only one on the board that has gone through a superintendent search. But I've done it twice. And immediate districts around us, Algenac and Port Huron, are looking for superintendents. Algenac superintendent, I believe, left in the spring last year. Port Huron's is leaving in June as well. But finding a superintendent is probably next to maintaining a budget, the most important thing that we're going to do. So, that being said, there's all kinds of ways to go about doing it. I met with Linda last week and I pulled up some stuff from the last time and I kind of did a little bit of research, but I wanted to wait until we were all able to talk as a board. And we're talking tonight about meetings and commitments and all that kind of stuff. But I'd like us to be able to schedule a meeting where the seven of us, where we can sit down and talk about what it means, timeline, and sooner rather than later, sometime this month. And I'll send you guys some stuff, but with the ideas of this initial planning meeting, if you will, things that I'll want from you guys is a direction, you know, what, what you're looking for. We need to talk about what we're looking for in our next superintendent, how we want to go about doing the search, all of that. So I'll have, I'll have stuff for us from when we've done it previously and for some information that I just got together. But I'd like, as we're sitting here, to plot our calendars. If a process for looking for a superintendent, in reality, can take three to five months, four to six months. By the time you get everything, you know, together of what it is you're looking for in a superintendent, sending out notices that we're looking for someone, so along with everything that's going on with the band, we've got this. And this is going to take up a lot of time. And it's going to take more than an hour when, each time that we meet, just so everybody, I'm just, I'm telling, I'm telling you, it is. I'm going to keep keying on it until I'm finished with what I'm saying, yes. So just so everybody understands, when we schedule it, I don't know how long it's going to take, the initial meeting, and as things go through, I don't know. When we get into interviewing and all of that kind of stuff. So, with that being said, if we can-
Would it be possible to do it February 3rd to first Monday in February? Because I don't know if the baby is going to be in answer. After this week, if I need any day type of thing.
We can do something different with that, couldn't we?
We've already delayed it a month, so.
I mean, or another day. I'm just trying to get it as early, as close to January as I can.
We've got February 3rd thrown out there. Anybody got anything else? And at February 3rd, Tracy and I do have another commitment, but-
What time is your holiday?
The earliest that I've been here in town is the morning of six thirty.
Is that the 3rd you're talking about, Tracy? Six thirty on the 3rd of February?
And I don't know if that's going to have my foundation date, so.
Well, I mean, I don't hear anybody else throwing any other dates out, so.
I'm hoping for Saturdays and Sundays too, if anybody else does.
Yeah, nothing's saying we can't do a Saturday morning?
Coffee and bagels and all that. Off the door.
The 18th?
Saturday's a horrible time.
Yeah, I work most days.
Okay. About a Sunday night?
It was supposed to be the 3rd. Third time for me.
And move the foundation? Okay.
Things other people that I haven't connected with about that, but.
I mean, I was going to do it for, Tuesday for it. I don't, I'm just trying to do it as soon as possible. That's why I said the 3rd.
Okay. February 3rd at 6:30?
I mean, that's a bit early, but potentially should have. That's fine. That's fine.
The 3rd at 6:30. Where do you want to meet? Do we want to meet here? Do we want to meet in Dr. Olson's office conference room? Okay. Okay, 6:30, the 3rd, in Dr. Olson's conference room. And I will make sure that I get before then the stuff that I, I can put together to have to everybody before that. And then if everybody just comes with your thoughts, your ideas, and how we want to go about doing this and putting a timeline together and all of that.
With the idea that we potentially would have someone help us to this project. We'll have to deal with the world.
Well, that's, right. That's, that's part of the discussion too. There are-
Yeah, I think the last, the first time I ran for the board, I said, and the process with MASB, I think we were-
Yeah, there's MASB, there's Michigan Leadership Institute or Leader Institute, something like, those are the two. My, my feeling is that we, we definitely want to have assistance in doing it. We don't want to do this ourselves. So I would, I was going to have information on both of those. Both MASB and Michigan Leadership for everyone.
And are we going to discuss with them that we're going to do like a committee for it or is it always going to be all seven of us?
Well, in reality, it should be all seven of us, yes.
Well, right. But I mean, you know, sometimes you do hometown visits and stuff like that.
We didn't do hometown visits la, and those are, those are all part of the things that we'll talk about on the 3rd, and how exactly do we, do we want to do it?
Wasn't that some of that, when you have a consultant coming though, they recommend what, what process you face to do that?
Yes. Yep. Yep, exactly. Good? Okay. Now, public comments. We have any public comments out there? Okay, let's go with agenda items to be included at our next meeting. And our next meeting date, February, what was it? 24th?
24th.
Which is, that's the last, that's the fourth Monday, correct?
Yeah, we've got six weeks here between meetings. And if there were an opportunity with another meeting to add a couple of items, I would add the Hendrix contract. And I think we're going to have a recommendation for some shared services, food service.
Well, all we're going to do on the 3rd is superintendent discussion. So, I think if Hendrix, if we didn't have it, he, I, he can wait till February 24th, correct?
Yeah, he said he would wait till the next meeting.
Okay. And the shared services?
It wasn't, it wasn't his fault.
No. I'm not saying that it was his fault. I'm just saying that that, all we're going to do on the 3rd is the superintendent search. That's it. So then, so on the 24th would be the construction manager contract, shared services. We're going to do, right? We've got our TruBu moment too. Any, anything else?
It probably will be by then, but that's what I have, I know of right now.
Okay. We also have, coming up, just the administrator meetings. Okay. Even though that's not included at the next meeting, but that's between now and then to get those set with Linda. No, yeah, that's what I was saying, if you could get those, get with Linda and get those dates, so we can get that started. Anything else? Agenda items? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I made the motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Aye oppose. Meeting adjourned, looks like at 7:55.